We're going to get started with the general portion of the meeting. First, we got ordinances on second reading. Orders, one, orders to grant Easeman into the city of New Brunswick right away on Duke Street, block sixty-two, lot forty-nine, zero-one. Then we got orders for first reading. Orders number one, an order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic Stopping and Standing in Limited Parking Section 10-16-210, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Errors, Reference to St. Dan Street. Two, an order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing in Parking Section 10-16-030, Schedule 26, No Parking Certain Hours, Alternate Parking Street Cleaning Program, Reference to Hardinburg, High Street, and Division Street. Then we have resolutions. One, approval of general amendments. Two, approved payrolls, eight-four eighteen to eight-seventeen eighteen. B, eight-eighteen eighteen to eight-thirty-one eighteen. Three, authorized refunds for tax sales certificates. Four, approved order contract with Baker &amp; Taylor Incorporated for books purchased from the wholesale distributor for the New Brunswick Public Library, term twelve-month ending, commencing September seventh in two thousand eighteen and ending September sixth, two thousand nineteen. Specification number six-ninety-eighteen RFP, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, free and open. Five, approved order contract with Sterzo and Coni USA Incorporated for four local column lifts and accessories. Sterzo Coni, S.T., one-zero-eight-five, two from Earth Lift, E-Brite, not to exceed fifty-five thousand point ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Source called formerly the National Joint Powers Alliance. Six, approved amendment of resolution, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of one thousand point fifty dollars to Anthony Loyolo Esquire of Boris Golden Foley, Loyolo Heim install, P.C., for special counsel for Board of Ethics hearing, from nineteen thousand three to ninety-two thousand forty-two cents to twenty thousand eight hundred forty-two thousand forty-two cents. Seven, approved order for books purchased by Department of Public Works under the New Jersey State Contract, A-88-7-27-T, two-twenty-one hundred, vehicles, vehicles, trucks, class two, pickup utility with snowplow option, for Bayer Fleet LLC, one-four F-two-fifty truck, not to exceed twenty-eight thousand point seventy dollars and fifty cents. Eight, approved ABC liquor license removal, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Nine, approved purchase by State Department of Public Works under the New Jersey State Contract, A-88-214-T, that's twenty-one zero-two, vehicles, trucks, class, utility dump, with snowplow option, for a bike provider fleet LLC, for one-four F-four-fifty truck, not to exceed forty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Ten, authorized leased a coffee machine for the water utility plant, Rico Incorporated, for one Rico model, M.P.C., three-oh-seven G, color copier system, hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars fifty-five cent for month, commencing October first, two thousand eighteen, ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Forty-eight month contract, state contract, A, state contract, four-oh-four, four-sixty-seven G, two-oh-seven-five, copiers, maintenance and supplies. Eleven, approved request for use of city property requested by Goi, galvanizing and organizing youth activism at Rupples. Location began at Nickel Avenue, George Street, Albany Street, Eastern Avenue, Bubbal Park, College Avenue, the Student Center for Seventeenth Annual Wealth for Literacies, date Saturday, October sixth, two thousand eighteen, time eleven a.m. to four p.m. Twelve, approved amendment of resolution, reason change location of park, Recreation Park, and change date, October thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Approved request for use of city property requested by Damon House. Location, Recreation Park, grassy area, and basketball court, for basketball event with the community recreation, community education regarding opioid addiction. Date Saturday, October thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, time one p.m. to five p.m. Thirteen, approved order contract with Clifton Service Incorporated, Clifton Service Company Incorporated, for elevator maintenance and repairs, term thirty-six month period, commencing September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, and ending September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Specification number six-nine-one-eighteen P, not to exceed forty-seven thousand nine-hundred forty-eight dollars. Fourteen, approved amendment of resolution, R-07-148-1845, reason, additional amount of seven-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars in payout standing and invoices for the youth water utility, of Suburban Consulting Engineers Incorporated, for engineering services for Rupples Will's water main replacement project. Specification number six-fourteen-seventeen RFP, not to exceed seven-hundred-and-seventy-one Fifteen, approved amendment of resolution, zero-six-one-eight-two-five, reason additional amount of thirty-six thousand two-hundred-and-one dollars and eighty-one cents to pay outstanding invoices, with Municipal Maintenance Corporation for mechanical and engineering, electric maintenance and emergency repair work at the water pump treatment plant station, not to exceed thirty-six thousand two-hundred-and-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Approved this change, order will constitute an increase of twenty percent of original contract. Sixteen, designation of municipal humane law enforcement officer. Seventeen, approved order contract with Institute for Forensic Psychology for psychological services for the police department and fire department, term twelve-month period, commencing September seventh, two thousand eighteen, ending September sixth, two thousand nineteen. Specification number six-nine-two-eighteen RFP, not to exceed seventeen thousand twenty-five dollars, fair and open. Eighteen, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance, perform a crane pick at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital to set roofing material. Date Saturday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, time seven a.m. to three p.m., non-pro ton. Nineteen, authorized to refund Michael Espino Vasmianno Esquire due to tax court judgment against block seven-oh-three, that's oh-three, lot number zero-zero-two-zero-one. Fifteen, USI, one, in amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Twenty, approved request for use of city property by Greater New Brunswick Charter School. Location, youth sports complex, Upper Field, back-to-school celebration and carnival, Friday, September seventh, two thousand eighteen, time seven a.m. to three p.m. Twenty-one, approved request for use of city property requested by Dara Markes. Location, Joyceville Park, everybody gazebo and basketball courts, for festival celebration of Hispanic heritage and fundraiser, Cachaca, New Brunswick. Saturday, date Saturday, September eighth, two thousand eighteen, rain date Sunday, September ninth, two thousand eighteen, eleven a.m. to seven p.m. Twenty-two, authorized refund, Archer and Graham, P.C., as a trustee for New Street Area Development LLC, to tax court judgment, in amount of two thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and thirty-four cents against block one-forty-nine, lot eight-point-zero-one-two-nineteen, Townsend Street. And we have twenty-three, approved relaxation of noise ordinance and road closure, request about PJ and Mechanical Contractors Incorporated, reason to place a crane on Somerset Street between Hardinburg Street and High Street, in order to perform a crane pick at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, date Saturday, September eighth, two thousand eighteen. Ultimate date, September, Saturday, September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, time four a.m. to four p.m. Twenty-four, approved order contract with E.S.R.I. Incorporated for maintenance and support contract for proprietary software, for GSI development software applications for division of assessments, term twelve-month period, commencing September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, ending September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, not to exceed two thousand four hundred dollars. Twenty-five, authorization for repair and replacement for fencing in various parts and division of parks and shade trees with consolidated steel aluminum fence corporation. New Jersey State Contract, eight-eight-six-eight-zero-T, zero-six-four-zero, not to exceed sixty-one thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Twenty-six, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure requested by Precast Services Incorporated, reason to place a crane on Fire Street between George Street and Elm Road, in order to perform a crane setup to erect a new Precast parking garage for the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. Date Saturday, September fifteenth, time six a.m. to eleven fifty-nine p.m. on Sunday, September sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, twelve a.m. to one p.m. Approved seventy-seven, approved order contract with Traffic Lines Incorporated for two thousand eighteen traffic line strike man. Specification number nine-two-six-eighteen, not to exceed forty-four thousand nine-hundred forty-two dollars. Twenty-eight, approved order contract with Garden State Highway Products for furnish and deliver two thousand eighteen regulatory signs. Specification number nine-two-five-eighteen, not to exceed thirty-three thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars ninety-three cents. Twenty-nine, approved amendment of resolution, reason change to Monday, October first, two thousand eighteen, off-premise travel, at seventy-seven Church Street, requested by Quarterpoint and Special Advocates for K.C.A.S.A., Monday, October first, two thousand eighteen, thirty. Authorized tax collector can transfer over payments on several taxing utility accounts. And that's it. And we got public discussion, dates to remember, city council, okay, so on and so forth. Meeting is now coming to order. Please do. Yeah.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig.
Here.
Council President Fleming.
Here. Please be advised that they, please be advised of notice requirements of public, public meeting that have been complied with and satisfied in the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public news of the municipal clerk of municipal council of the city of New Brunswick and has been filed, but the city clerk has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. New Brunswick, New Jersey has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely the home news. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we're named, one nation under God and the principle of righteousness for all.
And please remain standing or homing for those that have given their life in defense of this country and those that are dying needlessly around the world from senseless violence.
All right. The motions of the chairman, two minutes, General DeLara Egan.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Now we got a support of, do we have any correspondence?
Yes.
Okay.
A copy of the biennial certification report and annual mediation cost review form for the site located at Eight Jewels Lane from Atlantic Environmental Solutions, Inc. A notice from the county clerk's office in regards to a plot designated as Livingston Ave, complete streets from Elizabeth Street to New Street, G.P. map showing existing rights of way. A request to set up a site inspection and release of the bond for forty-eighth Sicard Street from D&amp;D LLC, AKA Knights Apartment Complex. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right. We have no public hearings, so now we got ordinances on second reading. Orders on second reading, number one, an order to grant Easeman into the city of New Brunswick right away on Duke Street, block number sixty-two, lot number forty-nine, dash one. Anybody from the public like to comment on this one? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, now we got orders on first reading. Number one, an order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic Stopping and Standing in Parking Section 10-16, Schedule two-one-zero, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Errors, Reference to St. Dan Street.
Move the ordinance setting out September nineteenth, six-thirty p.m. Same date will be out of time.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Now we have two, an order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing in Parking Section 10-16-030, Schedule 26, No Parking Certain Hours, Alternate Parking Street Cleaning Program, Reference to Hardinburg Street, High Street, and Division Streets.
Move the ordinance setting out September nineteenth, at six-thirty p.m. Same date will be out of time.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, now we have resolutions, number one, all the way up to thirty. Anybody from the public like to speak? The resolutions, please remember, if you have five minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick resident, editor of community newspaper, calling New Brunswick today, and a candidate for mayor of this great city. I'd like to ask first about eight-sixteen, the designation of municipal humane law enforcement officer. Just want to understand why this particular detective was chosen. I reached out to Captain Miller previously and was told that the department's humane, assigned humane officer was Detective Gallardo, and this is a different person being designated tonight by the council. I'd just like to understand why the change and what this person's qualifications are to do this job.
I don't believe we've ever designated Detective Gallardo as the humane, animal humane officer. This was just a recent obligation of ours that was brought to our attention a couple meetings ago, if you recall, by Nancy Scalzone, and she was right, the statute had changed and required to extend to designate municipal humane law enforcement officer. Dan did manage the animal control unit, but this is, I think, a different designation, and I can't speak to Detective Mamone's qualifications other than he was highly recommended by the police director.
Mr. Council President, could you please ask Captain Miller if he can speak to the detective's qualifications and also his August eighth statement that Detective Gallardo was serving in this capacity?
Captain Miller.
Detective Gallardo has always served for quite a number of years as the animal control supervisor or officer assigned to that. There was a new law that came out earlier this year which required the municipality to have a law enforcement officer as a humane officer. The law also talks about guidance from the county, which the county hasn't provided yet, so now we're moving forward when Scalzone brought up the meeting. Officer Gallardo, our Detective Gallardo is eligible for retirement. He hasn't indicated that he's ready to retire, but he is thinking about it, so we're putting Detective Russ Mamone, who has quite a many number of years to go. He's going to be attending training in October. There is a small component to give you a little extra training on that, animal control humane part of it. He's going to go to that school in October, and he will be the humane officer for the department.
Okay. This training, is this training that Detective Gallardo has already gone through?
No.
No? So there's no, no detectives had this training?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll move on. I'd like to know about Resolution twenty-two, the, is there a representative of New Street Area Development LLC here tonight, and what exactly is this?
It is the refund due to a tax court judgment. I don't know if there's a representative here. I think the resolution probably addresses the specifics of the judgment, but you're refunding a property order because of the judgment, as a tax assessment was too high.
Okay. And is there representatives, Archery Grineer here, somebody from that law firm?
I don't believe so, Mr. Council President. Normally cases such that there isn't a representative, you need to team them. They're not asked to come, obviously they can come next to public meeting.
Of course. And yeah, I'm just curious, because these folks seem to have a knack for buying properties in areas where the city was going to develop. This one is just outside of that, and I believe it was in very poor condition until a member of the South Brunswick Planning Board bought it from this LLC, and it's now being, you know, rehapped. But I'm just curious, who's behind this LLC? Is there any, is that in resolution, or any indication as to who, who is the LLC, who owns it?
I don't have any information on the LLC, the principles of which are not named in the, in the resolution, just the Archery Griner, P.C., is referenced in the body of the resolution.
Okay. Mr. President, could you please ask the planning director if he has any knowledge of who's involved in this LLC?
Who's planning, no, no.
Okay. That's all I have on the resolution, thank you.
Anybody else on the resolutions?
Twenty-six, due to where we're blocking the road off of Fire Street because George Street and Elm, Elm follow. Is this for the project that's right next door to the bank here?
Right here. Yes.
And due to, due to where I see the city where it was asked for me to mention about it, due to where the city is not respecting the businesses to the store, due to where you're really lowering finances for them, due to where you're blocking the roads off where to park, where it did ask me to mention it to you. Please, hope you will be done soon, due to where no parking is allowed over here, and he's losing a big number of money. So how long is this finished up, is it going to be going off, excuse me, going on?
I think at least a year still, I don't know the completion date, but offhand, I can get it for you.
A year.
It's two years?
No, I'd say a year, a year.
So wow, do, does the city really think about the store owners in the area, due to where they're losing a lot of business, due to where you have these roads blocked off and taking away parking?
You represent the property?
Yes.
Well, I would say to build something, you need to, you need to build it, so, and I believe that the store owners are going to be very happy when they have all the residents that are going to live there later on, they're going to be going to the store there. You gotta know how you do without building it. So it takes time, you gotta build it. I'm sorry, we're not on, on, on the, on the contract.
Due to where, yes, you have to pay, have to pay taxes too, but like I said, you're taking up the space, due to where no parking is available, and like I said, it's lowering the funds.
Do you recommend, do you recommend that the store owners, have they talked to you?
Yes, I have talked to the store, thank you.
All right.
I, I just talked to them a little while ago, thank you. That's maybe why I'm, I'm asking, you know, due to where I see that listed. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig.
I think I have the same. Or the process. Do you know who's right now?
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, now we'll go to the public portion of the meeting. Like, items for discussion, I'm sorry. Items for discussion, anybody?
I just want to remind people, obviously, the school is starting. We don't need any more accidents or anything like that, a lot of drivers' faults, so sign on the area of caution, please.
The Jazz Festival is next Saturday day, George Street, actually, from one to five I believe, next Monday.
I just want to say that while I was on vacation, I received several texts of community members very happy with Joyce Comer Park and the sprinkle, so they were happy to see children, the people in the neighborhood to see their children playing, so I want to congratulate and say thank you to the park departments and the sprinkling parks for making it happen in all the parks that we have, but especially the one in Joyce Comer, because that's where people reach out to me to say thank you. And also the Saturday, yes, the St. Talk, and people of Parks on Saturday, they're going to do the Grand Open inauguration, right, of the, 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 yeah, so everybody's invited at eleven, at eleven a.m., just to come and join and have fun and see the great improvements that we're making to see parks. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so now we'll go to the public discussion. Anybody wants to speak, please come up, give your name and address for the record, please remember, if you have five minutes.
Three-thirty-three Somerset Street. Also, I'd like to thank the city for doing the Joyce Comer Park. It has been very, very fun. Thank you for trying to keep, they keep, well, not trying, but thank you for keeping our children cool. Also, I will say thank you to the fire department, also how they came up with an idea spraying the hoses in some parks and areas to keep the children cool also. Now, my main concern, due to where I did speak to the Board of Education at the meeting, now has the city and the Board of Education come with an agreement with trying to raise the price fifteen dollars so we can get more crossing guards?
Well, I'm not sure how raising the hourly rate allows you to hire more people, but nonetheless, based on your recommendation, or your suggestion from a couple meetings ago, I've talked to Mayor Cahill, and we're going to introduce an ordinance at the next meeting which is going to raise the hourly rates of all school crossing guards by seven percent, which is the same amount of increase the blue-collar bargaining unit would have gotten during that same period of time. So that will take the starting compensation from twelve-fifty an hour to roughly thirteen dollars and ninety cents an hour, and we're going to introduce an ordinance next week to that effect.
Okay, I do thank you for that.
Thank you for raising it. It was actually, it was a very valid point, that unit had not gotten a compensation increase in a couple years.
Okay, thank you, and now I'd like to ask you, do you have enough crossing guards available, especially in the zone of progress in school, due to where they will be opening tomorrow?
I'm going to let the police department answer that. They're the ones who identify where a school crossing guard is needed. I think we have forty-five employed right now. We employ everyone that the police department vets and recommends to us, so I don't know if they feel they have any open sites, but I'll let Lieutenant Miller speak to that to be what.
Yeah, we have forty-five right now. We feel we can handle all the posts that we need, however, we would, we're still taking applications if anyone else would like to apply, because we can always have fill-in and stuff when guards don't show up, or we could add a post or deal with this, this school year. We're fine.
Thank you, that's a great idea. I thank the city and the mayor also for giving the raise. Also, I'm asking, due to where a school is opening up tomorrow, that this be an immediate job, job soon as possible. That's where on Joyce Comer Avenue on the corner of Juliet Street. There is a big dip in the street, and I managed causing curbs, cars to swerve off away from it, and due to where we're going to have a lot of buses right there, due to where you have the charter school right there in that area, so please, I do hope you have someone immediately, first thing in the morning, someone to go check this out, and please, can they fill this hole, because I mean, it's getting so deep. I, so, so please, I hope you can have someone to respond to it immediately.
I think the city engineers' office is taking note of that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I see the depression in the redway that you're speaking of, and it needs, it does need an immediate repair.
Thank you then. Also, that for middle, middle school, about the speed limit being reduced to twenty-five miles per hour. I do, do see, what I, I did, did give me good news, but it was a good smile when they're just putting the signs up for twenty mile, twenty-five miles per hour. I thank you for that, but I'm still asking, how long would it be before you put the lights up flashing saying school zone, twenty-five miles per hour?
Tom, do you have a?
Oh, that would be, you have to head to our two thousand nineteen capital budget requests.
So you're saying in two thousand nineteen, due to where, what? We said that this was approved already. This has been going on since April and May, and due to where, I'm not sure which month it was, believe me, I will look through my papers, yes, this was approved already, to have this, have this done. That was also in a traffic meeting, where how we said it would take a little more time, that's why you would put up the signs for twenty-five miles per hour, but honestly, due to where, like I said, I appreciate you taking the time to put them up immediately with the past couple of days, but like I said, there's still, it's a blind zone with some of the signs, so the agreement was approved already to have the flashing lights, just like every other school has, please reduce school, reduce the speed limit in school zone. So now you're saying that they have to wait till two thousand nineteen?
Let me respond to that. First of all, the state DOT did not approve flashing lights, they just approved the reduction in speed at the school zone during school hours. We waited till last minute, because I was, New Jersey DOT's main division should have installed the signs. We went ahead and unilaterally installed those signs to help further protect the children, so we kind of did it unilaterally, on state, right away, so theoretically, they didn't come back and take the signs down, but we went ahead as a caution, as an overbumps of caution in order to install those. The capital budget process, as you well know, starts in December. We didn't get approval from the state until April, so it was too late to put it into the capital budget for two thousand eighteen. These are not cheap devices, these devices probably cost thirty thousand dollars apiece. It's a capital issue that we can only include in our two thousand nineteen project at this point, but we still have to secure permission from the state to put the flashings in, that's a different story. They did approve the reduction of speed for the school zone.
Okay, thank you, but I will speak, hopefully tomorrow, we can do something a little better in the traffic meeting tomorrow, and also, due And also due to where, uh, for Livingston School and Roosevelt School, wow, I know it's going to be another hot day, has the city and the Board of Education come together with getting a cooling device, an air conditioner to keep the children full, cool?
Absolutely, no. Because we haven't, you know, if anything, the heating index goes above a certain thing, just like a lot of other schools, they will get a half a day, it will be a half a day. I'm not saying it is going to be, but that's, that's what usually this guideline is on.
But then also, like, uh, let's see, about three months ago, you did also say the Board of Education needed help, so that they needed help, so how come the city hasn't helped them?
I mean, they had, asked in a request, it's not a simple request, I mean, just to put in, you know, put in an air conditioning unit, I mean, there's a lot of things, to even put them in schools, even if we had older buildings and stuff, I know that even if a teacher wanted to put their own unit in there, it wouldn't be possible because there's a lot of regulations and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night, thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, my name is Edio Rosario, I'm with U D Square, um, we're here to start a conversation on updating a current ordinance that we have, it's the wage theft ordinance. So we have some community members here that would like to speak on that.
Which one?
The wage theft, wage theft ordinance, and we have some community members that would like to speak on it, and we also have a letter that we'd like to present, the city council.
Buenos dias.
Good afternoon.
First of all, we'd like to thank the city council for helping the community, uh, my name is Christina Vareyes and she's with U D Square. I live on two oh three Seaman Street.
Uh, first thing, we know that we're discussing the wage theft ordinance. And we'd like them to enforce this ordinance. Uh, we know that when the city, uh, enforces the wage theft ordinance, in instances, uh, this, the business owner doesn't really get remanded until they go to renew the license, and this allows time for the victim to sometimes not get reparations, to be compensated, um, so we'd like to ask that the time limit in which a business has to repay a, um, a victim be shortened and be more enforced, uh, strictly. Um, we know that, um, we thank for helping the community, this is an ordinance that the communities, uh, gain a lot of unease around, um, as she was saying, because community members are having to wait to get their wage, wage, their stolen wages back, and so we'd like there to be a bit more security, and we'd like for business owners that are repeat offenders to feel more, uh, consequences, or stronger consequences, and kind of serve more as a deterrent from committing wage theft in the first place.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Should I?
Thank you.
Tengo un tema, este, cuando aspecto a la, está aumentando en la comunidad, personas drogadictas, personas alcohólicas, sé que esto es una, un caso social, problema social, pero veo que está aumentando y más en mi área. No sé cómo se puede hacer, cómo se puede trabajar con la policía, yo les llamo, sé que no es malo que estén parados en la esquina, pero eso, ahora que empieza la escuela, los jóvenes, los niños están viendo todo este problema sobre droga, no sé, yo.
In qué área?
Todo lo que es la cima, empezando de Lee, Renzen, true, y lo preciso. Es un problema que se ve a diario.
She's bringing, um, forth an issue that she's creating to her community, when she said, she said, eh, addiction and people standing in the area and me, eh, but being a nuisance to the community, and she's afraid that now that the school is starting, that this is going to increase, so she's asking to see if she could work, you know, how can she work with the police department or anybody else to make sure that this issue is, um, addressed in that area, that part of the community, so I asked what area, and she says Seaman between Lee, true of that area, eh, then it's a little bit of attention, I agree with you, I've been there and I see it, so.
Captain Miller? You hear it?
No.
Oh.
There's, there's a lot of, you know, eh, people addicted to drugs hanging out on Seaman, which is creating a concern to the residents in that area, especially now that school is going to start, so they'd like to see how can they work with the police department or how, what can they do to address that issue. She, they do understand that somebody could be walking, you cannot move somebody from, you know, you can't let everybody from walking to standing in the area, but when it creates a nuisance to everybody else who lives in that area, they just want to see if that could be addressed, and they would like to address that with the police department, how can they work together to make sure that, that, um, it doesn't happen, especially now that school, eh, is starting, and I'm telling her that I witnessed this, the same issue and it's, it's really, it's missed, and I had spoken to the police department about it, but that again is attention, it really does.
If, um, they like to speak with us, uh, specifically, I think, call my office or, uh, call Lieutenant Mark Hattis who oversees the narcotics unit, we'll have him sit down with them and go over any kind of plans.
But if you see anything specific at the time, please just call the police.
But it's not a danger, sorry, she says the police goes by, but she just doesn't know if there's anything else that it can do, so I said just to reach out to you guys. Gracias, thank you.
Their appearance might scare them off a little bit, so.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradaville of Brunswick, you're Brunswick today, candidate for mayor, I want to sincerely thank Danielle Moore for, uh, sticking up for the crossing guards and for the folks that benefit from their services, I'm pleased to see the administration's going to move forward with that seven percent raise, and I just have a few questions about that to start off, so that seven percent raise is going to be, uh, for all of the, the guards, not just the ones that live?
All of the different? All the different, um, salary or wage brackets, yes.
Thank you.
Everyone will get a seven percent increase.
Thank you. Well deserved, seven percent increase, and, uh, will the Board of Ed continue reimbursing the city for the entire cost of that?
I don't know that we're going to negotiate with the board between now and the end of the year, um, for additional reimbursement from them, um, we may try that, if we don't, we'll just absorb the additional costs ourselves. Maybe we'll include that in future agreements with the board, but I don't know if we'll try something, we will hand it to you.
Okay, and I just want to understand about this, uh, new speed limit on Livingston Avenue. The speed limit is twenty-five now? Or it's still less?
No, specific to the DOT's, I forget the term of art, the, uh, traffic regulation order, it's only between twelfth and ninth streets, school days during school hours, that's it.
It's twenty-five?
It's thirty-five on either side, yes, but it's twenty-five between twelfth and Ninth Street on school days for school hours.
Okay, and so that, uh, is that signed? Has that sign been put up?
Yes, we've installed signs, technically it's the state of New Jersey's DOT's right away, technically their main division should be installing the signs, I waited for the last minute, I didn't want to, again, as an abundance of caution, we went ahead and had those signs installed between yesterday and today, we have a warning sign, twenty-five ahead, we have three twenty-fives on the side of the middle school in that area, then obviously on the North Project side, we went ahead, put a twenty-five ahead as you approach New Brunswick, and again, between twelfth and ninth, we installed three twenty-five mile an hour zones opposite, uh, the middle school.
I'll tell it to you.
Yeah, right, uh, well, I'll say thank you to the acting director for doing that, and thank you to the administration, council, the Board of Ed for supporting that, and Miss Moore who was also a big part of it. So when did Mr. Lavenberg resign from the water utility?
July thirteenth.
July thirteenth, and when was the council planning to discuss this resignation?
We don't discuss when people leave. When have we done that?
I think, uh, Mr. Zarecki resigned earlier this year, and Mr. Egan made some remarks to the effect of thank you for your service, and, you know, the, the natural question of who's going to replace him was addressed.
He retired.
He retired. Mr. The Other Guy moved to another job, I think.
Right, so I would just figure, you know, a person of that stature as department head leaving office would, would, uh, be addressed, and I think I recall a time when Mr. Marasha left, and I was the one who brought that to everyone's attention at this meeting, and I would have thought that we all learned a lesson from that in that, you know, the, uh, personnel changes of that level of importance ought to be addressed in this public forum. Um, and so I guess if it was July thirteenth, that means we've had a couple of meetings since then without it being addressed, and so, uh, you know, I, I have to ask, the, uh, acting director is Mr. Wallace, and if you go to the city website, you'll see a statement, March twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, um, from when, uh, it says here, Mr. Wallace quote, "has been removed from his position as director, effective immediately following an incident involving the use of derogatory and inappropriate language." Uh, does the council have any comment on Mr. Wallace now returning to that position of director, or at least acting director?
Would he ever come? No.
No comment?
No, I mean, just twenty fifteen, and I can speak for myself personally, that in twenty fifteen, I knew that people change, people make mistakes, and it's a lot of people in this room, including you and everybody else, we've all made mistakes before, and how long do we allow that to hold over our heads? I believe that there's room for redemption in all people, so we don't, we just don't constantly hold it over our heads.
Thank you for the comment, um, and, uh, I guess the only other question then would be if it was July thirteenth that, uh, Director Lavenberg resigned, if, uh, Mr. Wallace assumed that office right away, fair to say the following day, maybe?
No, I think he was, uh, given the acting, uh, authority by the mayor on, well, I guess sixth, I believe.
Okay, so.
In the meantime, I have been trying to keep the business office, um, pointed in the right direction, Mr. Wallace is, um, with the help of Erica Coyette, who has now moved up and is managing the water treatment plant, um, Lex is, uh, and Eric are responsible for the, uh, production of water every day, the distribution of it, uh, compliance with the DDP, the EPA, uh, they're responsible for the, uh, capital improvements, uh, being made, uh, presently and being planned, and I'm, at the moment, assisting with the business office, uh, to keep them moving in the right direction, and we're going to be looking for someone to, uh, uh, fill the role of managing the business office, uh, we're not, uh, we have made, uh, placed some ads in a professional journal for awarding utility director, um, we have gotten no response to that, um, we've kind of shifted our thought process where we have a thirty-year-old professional in the organization already who, um, uh, is an outstanding employee, um, did make a mistake three and a half years ago, he's paid for that mistake, um, and, uh, we think we can at least cover the, the water production and distribution end of the business through our current employees, and we're going to be looking for someone to assist us in the business office.
Okay, so I have some follow-up, so between July thirteenth and August sixth, who was the water director?
The, the function was being covered by either maybe Mr. Wallace, maybe in some cases, the mayor's office.
Okay, and so if Mr. Wallace was, uh, appointed to the position on August sixth, is it, is my understanding correct that under the, I guess the Faulkner Act, uh, an acting director appointment can last up to ninety days, is that correct?
The, the director, acting director, lasts as long as the mayor so appoints or totally successor is, is appointed there. I don't believe the mayor appointed this for a specific timeframe is what I'm saying.
Okay, so it could go indefinitely, but what I heard tonight is that the city's intention to make Mr. Wallace the permanent director.
I think the mayor's going to assess the, uh, performance between now and the end of the year, and they'll see what his best, um, options are, but, um, Mr. Wallace has been an outstanding employee, uh, since, uh, the horrible mistake he made a couple while ago, he has accepted the, uh, consequences of that mistake for three and a half years now, um, and the mayor believes that, um, everyone's entitled to a second chance and circumstances have, uh, put us in a position to offer Mr. Wallace a second chance.
Thank you for the thorough answers, uh, I want to switch topics and talk about the Hub City Sounds series of, uh, you know, fun events, concerts, things like that, I think they're great, uh, it's fair to say they're city-sponsored events, no?
We approved the closure of streets and, um, um, we offer, um, police, um, extra duty, uh, protection for the events, but we clean up afterwards, probably clean up beforehand, we're involved, yeah.
And so the city contributes to those events and deserves credit for doing so, I think, you know, just in the time I've been here, they've come a long way, and they're really good things, um, I do have one concern, and I want to, uh, get the council's opinion on, uh, whether or not, uh, it's, uh, allowed or acceptable for political candidates to campaign at these events?
Against the law?
I don't think it's against the law, I think, uh, it's an open public event, members of the public, uh, whether, uh, shows up, whoever's to be a candidate or not, um, you know, we're talking about setting up a, you know, political table, or, you know, we're just talking about candidates walking through, talking to people, it's a public event, uh, it won't be against the law with that.
It's good to hear that, yeah, no, I, I totally agree, so, one of the great things about our country is we have free and fair elections, and part of that is political candidates can go to public events and public places and hand out literature, register voters, speak to voters, and, uh, I just want to make sure that that's okay because someone who, uh, is an organizer of the event, uh, told me otherwise, and, uh, you know, I, I respect this person, uh, but I wanted to understand what the, the city's position was, and, uh, I will, uh, clarify before this weekend's events that, that the city believes these are public events and the campaigning is allowed there, that'd be fair to say.
Well, it's, it's a fair one, it's, from my own understanding, so you're asking, you know, any literature or, and just in there, eh, registering people? Or you're asking to take the microphone and give your platform?
I would love to, that would be great.
But you have done it, that's what I'm asking you, so, you have done it in one of the festivals, so that's what I'm asking, what is it that you're asking for my clarification?
If I'm invited to speak, I will, but otherwise, I would just like to, you know, be able to hand out literature and, uh, register voters, and I, I don't see anything wrong with that, I think we're in agreement, um, but yeah, if I'm invited to speak, I would love the chance too, um.
I'm sorry, if I could just, now that I hear Mr. Cradaville clarifying his question, um, anybody could walk down the street in a public, uh, event or on a public sidewalk and hand out a palm card or whatever, it says whatever, a prayer card, I mean, this is what's permitted in this country. Um, if the event organizers are not allowing political tables to be set up and booths of that nature, that's a different story, and I don't know enough about the event that, uh, they're even allowing that, or that may be improper, it's not a political event, so to speak, but certainly people.
to speak, but certainly people who are in a public place could hand out whatever literature, it's First Amendment rights, or someone, something, but the person takes it or not is another matter, but it's a public street, it's a public event, and it's open to the public, so I don't see an issue with that.
So, I love it when we agree on things, so, hope to see you out there, the Rock in Brunswick on Saturday, and then the Indo-American Festival on Saturday and then Sunday. Have a good one.
Anybody else? See none?
Boogie Kujer.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Luckwitz?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.